Is 6:06 PM on today's August 17th. All other persons are present with Mr. Rayom participating by Zoom. We'll get into the first item on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance and Silent Prayer in lieu of invocation. All right, welcome everybody. Our first item of business is the Administration of Police Department Ceremonial Oss of Office and Badge Hitting for Sergeant Jordan Jayewski and Detective Lieutenant Jordan Lubak.
You're not gonna let me cook dinner? You tell me I had to cook dinner?
I was trying to see who that was. Um, Chief? I have to apologize, I didn't have my mic on for that.
All right, so here we go. We've got Jordan Lubak first, and we'll start with you. Okay, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Jordan L. Lubak.
I, Jordan L. Lubak.
Having been duly selected to serve as Detective Lieutenant of the Police Department for the City of Wisconsin Rapids, do hereby solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of the State of Wisconsin, and will faithfully discharge the duties of said office to the best of my ability. So help me God. Congratulations. All right. Okay, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Jordan Jayewski.
I, Jordan Jayewski.
Having been duly selected to serve as Sergeant of the Police Department for the City of Wisconsin Rapids, do hereby solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of the State of Wisconsin, and will faithfully discharge the duties of said office to the best of my ability. So help me God. Congratulations.
Okay, congratulations. Our next item is reading of the minutes of the previous meeting held on July 20th. It's the attachment one, and what are your wishes?
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. Mr. Rayom?
Aye.
Thank you. That motion carried eight As, zero Nays.
Do you want the pork chops?
I could probably eat some pork chops. Our next item on the agenda is... Sorry, I kind of got off here on my... Thinking about pork chops. As item six, consider a resolution issuing an emergency declaration due to the COVID-19 pandemic.
I'm going to approve.
We have a motion by Bemke. Second by Evenson. Mr. Delaney?
Who here, given that, what they know today, would take the same exact steps that was taken 18 months ago regarding the pandemic? Instead of repeating these failed steps, let's try to do something different. If a health emergency is going to be declared, we should have a solid basis using a well-thought-out set of metrics for doing it. Not cases are rising. Not that. Something more tangible of a real percentage of residents being affected, not declaring an emergency that right now affects less than 1/10 of 1% of Wood County residents.
Uh, Mr. Catna?
Thank you. In answer to your first, maybe it was a rhetorical question, but I would take the same steps that we did 18 months ago in giving the mayor the authority to work with federal, state, or other agencies in regards to take actions needed in case the pandemic does get out of control. That's the biggest thing for me, is just giving the mayor that authority. We've seen him with it before, and I think it's good to have that in his hands. He's done well with it and responsible with it before with no reactions. So I think it's good to see that again. Thank you.
Any other discussion? I guess just so you know, I'm not looking to wield this authority very quickly. As previously, I, you know, obviously it comes to council here, and that's my preferred route before doing anything without making sure council has that ability to discuss it and vote upon it. But I have no intentions to make sweeping changes, that's for sure. Mr. Veneman?
Based on that as well, we do it, we renewed it every month. We pretty much re-approved it every month until it seemed not necessary to do that. As the mayor never did anything without talking to us first. It's my feeling that leaving him with that authority is the way to go, and I agree with Mr. Catna. Particularly since each month at the council meeting, we have the opportunity to renew it or back it up. So I'm in favor of doing this. Thanks.
So I look back at the numbers that they were when you guys had canceled it the last time, and the current cases right now are very similar to what they were back then when you canceled it. I just think that there should be a real set of numbers that we can go by. Like if it reaches this point, not just, oh, well, cases are rising, it's an emergency.
Any further discussion? Go ahead, Mr. Rayom.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep. Go ahead, Mr. Rayom.
Thank you. I was gonna say, hopefully, I was gonna say silent on this one, but how many is too many? We see what is going on where it's running rapidly. This is to give the mayor the authority to declare an emergency if we have to. Call an emergency meeting of the council, it can be done. That's gonna take a couple days to do. This gives him the authority that if things get out of hand, he can do that on his own. He can if he wanted to. He can call a meeting in the council, or we can call a meeting in the council. The council president calls a meeting in the council. It still takes time to do. We see what's going around in the country. We see what people are saying and denying and all that. This thing's real. Maybe because maybe in your neck of the woods, maybe you say it's not. Maybe because it's only 1/10. Tell me it has to be 1.5? 0.15? We saw what this thing did before. If we would have done the first time, it was right, we may not be sitting in the point that we are right now. But we didn't get the, we didn't get it the first time. Let's all buckle up. Do what is right. Keep the cases low if we can. If we have to. I know people don't like what I have to say here. Get the shots if you haven't. Wear masks. Indoors for sure. This thing is real. I know nobody wants to go back to what we had last winter. Let's do our due diligence. Try to keep everybody as safe as we can. People have rights. Let those rights go on both sides of the aisle. I have a right to walk around safe and secure too. Not wondering who might be carrying it. Well, I'll get off my little tangent, and I'll maybe have some back later. Leave you with, it is real. The deniers, quit denying. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Bemke?
So I'd just like to say, this came out of Human Resources from last week. I guess what we're basing this on is information from the Health Department. I think we get more than one update a week, correct, Ryan? So we're getting pretty regular updates on this. This is going to be on our agenda going forward for the rest of the time if we have to make adjustments. But this gives us at least, if something has to be done in between, it gives Shane the authority to do it. So it's, I will support this, and it will be on our agendas going forward. So, thank you.
Any further discussion, comments, questions? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. Uh, Mr. Rayom?
Aye.
That motion carried seven As and one Nay. Next item on our agenda is consider a resolution that this city of Wisconsin Rapids be exempt from the payment of any county library tax provided in section 43.642A of the state statute, see attachment three. This is a yearly resolution. Maybe give Tim an opportunity if you'd like to explain for the new members. That was somebody else. Tim? Probably running to his computer. So I'm sure you might know a little bit about it, but maybe, maybe not. So all municipalities pay part of the, into the library. We, as a city, apportion part of our taxes already for the library, which is greater than our portion required by the county. And so this, by passing this resolution, we don't have to pay both. So we don't pay what we choose by a council in addition to what we would be taxed by the county for our portion. So it exempts us from paying that portion. Instead of basically double paying. Kind of what I recall of it.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
So we have a motion by Catna, seconded by Bemke. Uh, Mr. Zachar? How much? So I wish, I think we budget that one bought a million two? And is there, is there a mountain in the resolution? Is that, okay.
So the 481, it's my understanding that's the difference between what we pay and what, that's the part that's being exempted?
There we go, Tim's online.
Oh, Tim.
Tim?
The county formula says 481. The reason why they're exempt is because we budget from a property tax levy of $1,262,000, which is about 63.5% of their budget.
So by passing this resolution, we don't have to account for the county, what we would normally pay the county if we didn't budget it for, correct?
Right. What this resolution is basically doing is that city taxpayers do not get this levy down their county tax. It exempts them from that, and the 1,000,000, 2.6 million appears on their city tax so they support the library. So you want to pass this because you don't want city taxpayers paying both the county tax and the city tax.
Mr. Zachar asked how it would impact the library. Are you asking if we?
No, this does not impact the library at all. Basically, what they do is they submit a budget to us. It's supported by funding from the county and the city and other revenue sources. So it doesn't impact. It's more of a beneficial to the city taxpayers that they're exempted from this tax because we pay more than what the state statutes allow in their formula.
Thank you, Tim.
Answered the question?
Yes, it did. Is there any further questions, comments, discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. Mr. Rayom?
Aye.
Thank you. That motion carried eight As, zero Nays. Next item on our agenda is consider the adoption action of the Plan Commission held, or at its meeting held on August 2nd. The Plan Commission met at 4:00 PM on August 2nd at City Hall Council Chambers. A list of attendees are on file in the clerk's office. The meeting was called to order at 4:00 PM. Item one was approval of the reports from July 12th, 2021 Plan Commission Meeting. Motion by Tao to approve the Plan Commission report on July 12th, 2021, seconded by Feath. That motion carried four As, zero Nays. Item two is Plan 21-0730. Stephen Mauer, a request for a certified survey map. Approval to combine two lots, which include the dedication of a right-of-way at 2540 Lincoln Street, parcel IDs 3412447 and 3412445. Motion by Blazer to approve the request for a certified survey map to combine the two lots, which includes the dedication of the right-of-way at 2540 Lincoln Street, parcel IDs 3412447 and 3412445, seconded by Austin. That motion carried four As, zero Nays. Item three is Plan 210607, River Hill Dental Associates. A public hearing in action on a request for a zoning map amendment to rezone 406 Daly Avenue, parcel ID 3411001, from R2 Mixed Residential District to B2 General Commercial District or B5 Mixed Use Commercial District. Commissioner Gudrow left the meeting at this point because he was having audio issues. A public hearing was opened at 4:19 PM. No one spoke against and no one spoke in favor. That public hearing was closed at 4:20 PM. Motion by Austin to approve the request for a zoning map amendment to rezone 406 Daly Avenue, parcel ID 3411001, from R2 Mixed Residential District to B5 Mixed Use Commercial District. That was seconded by Feath. Motion carried four As, zero Nays. Item four was adjournment, motion by Tao to adjourn, seconded by Austin. That motion carried four As, zero Nays. Meeting adjourned at 4:21 PM, and I respectfully submit this report for your consideration. What are your wishes?
Move to approve.
We have a motion by Veneman, seconded by Zachar. Is there any questions, comments, discussions? Mr. Kern is in the audience, should anybody have any questions? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. Uh, Mr. Rayom?
Aye.
Thank you. That motion carried eight As, zero Nays. Item nine is consider adoption in the action of the standing committees of the common council as follows. Now, the first one is Finance and Property Committee meeting held on August 3rd. Mr. Rayom?
Thank you, Your Honor. Finance and Property Committee met at 4:30 PM on Tuesday, August 3rd, 2021, in the council chambers of City Hall. Meeting was live on Council Rapids Committee Access and Spectrum Channel 985 and Solaris Channel 3. All members of Finance and Property Committee were present. Also, attendants were all person Veneman, Mayor Blazer, Kyle Kearns, Jake Clinkforth, Jennifer Gosick, and Tim DeSorci. A list of others is in attendance is on file in the clerk's office. Item one was call the meeting to order. Chairperson Rayom called the meeting to order at 4:35 PM. Item two, consider for approval a temporary retail Class P fermented malt beverages and Class P wine license for Friends of Rapids Music Incorporated, 441 Second Street North, for the premises as outlined on the map, provided within Robinson Park for Friends of Rapids Music Fifth Annual Music Fest, to be held on September 11th, 2021, from noon to 9:00 PM. It's moved by Rayom, seconded by Bemke, to approve the temporary retail Class P fermented malt beverages and Class P wine license for Friends of Rapids Music Incorporated, 441 Second Street South, for the premises as outlined on the map, provided within Robinson Park for Friends of Rapids Music Fifth Annual Music Festival to be held on September 11th, 2021, from noon to 9:00 PM. That motion carried. Item three, selection of a consultant for the Wisconsin Rapids Recovery and Redevelopment Plan. It's moved by Bemke, seconded by Catna, to approve the selection of Bandawall and Assosciates Incorporated as a consultant for the Wisconsin Rapids Recovery and Redevelopment Plan. That motion carried. Item four, all the person Catna's request to review the financials to date for the Aquatic Center. Finance Director DeSorci reviewed the Aquatic Center revenue that has been generated to date with the committee. And that's attachment one. Full review of the revenue and expenses will occur at a later date once the aquatic season has concluded, and all the expenses to operate at this facility have been accounted for. No action was taken. Item five, audit of the bills. It's moved by Rayom, seconded by Catna, to approve check number 9200 to check number 9625. That motion carried. Item six was adjourned. It was a motion by Bemke, seconded by Rayom, to adjourn. Motion carried. Meeting adjourned at 5:00 PM, and with that, Your Honor, move for adoption report.
Thank you, we have a motion by Rayom. Second by Bemke. There we go, thank you. Is there any discussion, comments, questions? Seeing none? Please cast your ballots. Uh, Mr. Rayom?
Aye.
Thank you. That motion carried eight As, zero Nays. We're onto the Public Works Committee meeting held August 3rd, and also the one held today. Mr. Austin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Public Works Committee met on Tuesday, August 3rd, 2021, in the common council chambers. Myself, Matt Zachar, and Patrick Delaney were in attendance. Others attending are on file in the clerk's office. Item number one, call to order. The meeting was called to order at 6:00 PM. Item two, review and consider modifying the preliminary resolution for the reconstruction of 9th Ave. North from Fremont Street to McKinley Street and extended project south to 8th Ave. North. Motion by Austin, seconded by Zachar, to modify the preliminary resolution for the reconstruction of 9th Ave. North from Fremont Street to McKinley Street and extended project south to 8th Ave. North. Motion carried 3-0. Item three, consider approving a preliminary resolution for the reconstruction of Apricot Street from 11th Street to Broadway Street and Broadway Street from Apricot to Franklin Street. Motion by Zachar, seconded by Delaney, to approve a preliminary resolution for the reconstruction of Apricot Street from 11th Street to Broadway Street and Broadway Street from Apricot to Franklin Street. Motion carried 3-0. Item number four, review Department of Public Works activity report for the month of July. A letter recognizing excellent work was read. Item number five, review referral list. The referral list was reviewed. Item six was adjourned. Motion by Zachar, seconded by Austin, to adjourn. Motion carried 3-0. The meeting was adjourned at 6:25 PM. With that, I'll make a motion to approve the report of the Public Works Committee for August 3rd.
Thank you. We have a motion by Austin. Second by Evenson. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. Mr. Rayom?
Aye.
Thank you. That motion carried eight As, zero Nays. Uh, Mr. Austin?
The Public Works Committee met on Tuesday, August 17th, 2021, in the common council chambers and via remote video conference. Ryan Austin, Matt Zachar, and Patrick Delaney were in attendance. Others attending are on file in the clerk's office. Item number one, call to order. The meeting was called to order at 5:00 PM. Item number two, review an administrative appeal request from the Mead Witter Foundation resulting from a denial of street privilege. The Mead Witter Foundation wishes to install private conduits in the West Grand Ave. Public Street right-of-way. Motion by Zachar, seconded by Austin, to approve the appeal with the conditions presented by the engineering department wherein only low voltage power and water can exist. Said conditions include: Number one, insurance is required per the street privilege requirements. Insurance certificates must be updated on an annual basis. The city shall be a certificate holder so that the city is notified of any cancellation or non-payment. Number two, the bore occurred with a 6-inch bore hole and two conduits within the same bore hole, leaving a significant amount of soil settlement that could damage pavement and other infrastructure. Payment in lieu of remediation of void space and settlement is required. Value to be determined. Number three, degradation fees need to be paid and concrete panels replaced for the three-pot hole locations per the deadline to contractors. Number four, a 10-day notice of termination is required for the street privilege requirements. Number five, applicant is liable and responsible for all damages and injury. Number six, file with Digger's Hotline to be notified of locate requests in the vicinity of this line and promptly mark this facility to avoid damage or injury. Must have a long-term contract with the utility locator to make sure that this line gets marked. And number seven, irrigation electric conduit shall be properly abandoned to avoid further damage to other infrastructure in the following circumstances. A, the line is damaged and requires repair. B, the line needs to be relocated due to other public utility needs. C, line becomes unsafe to continual operations within the public right-of-way. D, excavations for abandonment cannot occur with the right-of-way. All abandonment shall occur using water and soil tight plugs and caps. And E, city requires abandonment termination as determined to be in the best interests of the city. Eight, a tracer wire is required. Nine, as-built records shall be provided on the city drawings. This shall include sufficient vertical and horizontal information across the right-of-way for sharing the utilities that are planning for infrastructure improvements. Location and depth shall be recorded every 5 feet along the conduit length. Motion carried 3-0. Item number three was adjournment. With that, I will make a motion to approve the report of the Public Works Committee for August 17th.
We have a motion by Austin, seconded by Evenson. We have a motion by Austin, seconded by Evanson. Uh, Mr. Delaney.
I would, uh, request to make an amendment to that with, uh, allowing them to continue work as planned with the 240-volt line installed. The city for a number of years has not treated, uh, business as well, or its residents particularly well. Uh, I think this is a clear-cut example of that. Also, kind of goes along with the no good deed goes unpunished.
So, that'd be a motion to amend the motion, I guess. Okay. Is there a second to that amendment? Seeing none, that motion. Oh, I'm sorry.
The motion to what he wants it to be, then you could second that, and then the motion, then we'd have.
We'd have a new motion.
Yeah, right. Otherwise, if you don't want, if you want to retain the original motion, then you probably wouldn't second it, but.
Yep. No, we're amending that motion.
He could amend the motion. If the body can amend the motion. Right, but the body, the body could amend the motion, so it requires a motion, a second, and a vote to amend the motion. So, we've got a, no, it's, we still have that motion. And that motion is in front of the body, and he wishes to amend it, so, yeah.
Yep.
Do you want a second?
Well, can I ask a question before I second it?
Absolutely.
Joe, is there, if we run 240 across the road, there's ways to protect. I mean, if anything happens, if it gets cut, there's ways to protect, like shut it off immediately, correct? Like, there's ways to protect the people who, you know, if something does happen down the road and that gets hit, there's ways to protect that, to shut it down immediately.
I mean, the city wouldn't have control of that. If, if I were working out there.
It would be a question for Banner.
And was hand digging or whatever, and I contacted a 240-volt 20-amp line, I'd probably end up dead. So, that is a very legitimate concern, that there's live private power line crossing a street right-of-way.
So, it's significantly safer if we just have water going across the road?
Right.
With a low voltage if needed?
Right.
I don't want to second the motion.
Okay, so, we do not have a second on the amendment, so we're back to the original motion to approve the report as presented. And Ryan would be the motion. Okay. Uh, is there any further discussion? A motion to second, uh, please cast your ballots. Ms. Evanson? The button didn't like it. Sorry. Mr. Raum.
No.
No. Nay. That motion, motion carried seven As, one Nay. We're on to item D, Human Resource Committee meeting held August 9th, 2021. Uh, Mr. Bemke.
Thank you, Mayor. Human Resource Committee met August 9th, 2021, um, in the council chambers. Meeting was called, item number one, the meeting was called to order at 5:03 PM. Uh, item number two was to discuss further COVID-19 policies and protocols in the event that they're needed. There was a motion by Bemke, seconded by Evanson, to provide the employee emergency paid COVID-19 leave in the amount of 10 days or two weeks equivalent. The city employees with said leave to be used before, by December 21st, 31st, 2021. And to recommend to the common council that an emergency declaration be considered at its meeting on August 17th to allow necessary actions to be taken by the mayor and council regarding the COVID-19 pandemic. Motion carried two zero. The emergency paid leave policy will be provided at the council meeting. Item number three was an update on the wage study. There was discussion and no action taken. Item number four was a motion by Evanson, seconded by Bemke, to go into closed session under session, under section 19.851E Wisconsin Stat, which reads, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing or of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons required a closed session. A roll call vote was taken. Motion carried two zero with Bemke and Evanson voting in the affirmative. Item A, in closed session, the committee discussed negotiations and bargaining strategy with, regarding labor negotiations with IAFF and WRPPA. Item five, motion by Bemke, seconded by Evanson, to adjourn in closed session. Motion carried two zero. Meeting adjourned at 5:55. With that, I'll submit for approval.
So, we have a motion by Bemke. Seconded by Austin. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. Uh, Mr. Raum.
Aye.
Thank you. That motion carried seven As and one Nay. We are on to item 10, reports of other committees, commission boards, or department reports. What are your wishes?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, we have a motion to approve and place in file. And by Ms. Evanson, Evans, Evanson. I've always known it, and now it's, and Mr. Zachar seconded it. Uh, Mr. Katna.
Thank you, I just wanted to draw attention to item eight on the Parks and Rec Commission minutes, which is an update on the dog park, uh, which states that staff met at Norton Pond and discussed the possibility of fencing off approximate five-acre portion to create the dog park. Uh, the next steps in the process would be to determine how this line might be earmarked for future use if developed in the park space. Possibility, no decisions have been made, but staff wanted the commission to be informed of what has been discussed. And the reason I bring attention to this is because my time on councils, uh, shortly, around the time I got on council, our dog park closed. I've been asked about it several times, and I don't think that the public knows too much that we're even looking at potential other options at Norton. And I think that that might be, this might be a call to bring forward some of those who might be advocates or on the other side of it, but I've been to Norton Pond, I think that's actually a really good location if we did consider that. So, I just wanted to draw attention to that, that as that discussion goes on, if people want to be a part of it, it is on the Parks and Rec's agendas.
Thank you, Mr. Katna, if I can kind of elaborate a little bit on that. I'd also spoken that, um, you know, I'm going to meet with some staff members, we're going to try to come up with a couple other options. And so, maybe bring forth maybe three different options and thoughts to the Parker Rec Commission, and kind of let that commission kind of wrestle around with maybe where they feel the best site would be. And then going forward from there, making sure that kind of process is taking place. But I agree that there's definitely overwhelming support for a dog park in the community. Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. Uh, Mr. Raum.
Aye.
Thank you. That motion carried eight As, zero Nays. Uh, next item 11 is referral to committees. Clerk, do we have any?
I have not received any referrals.
All right, council, does anybody have a referral they want to? Okay, moving on to item 12 is adjournment.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Raum. And seconded by Austin, all in favor, I guess, say aye.
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 Thank you. That motion carries, everybody have a great night.